This will be our 10-second warning. Give me one more minute to stretch, make sure you've got the makeup on. This is a big event. Ready, action? Oh yeah, help me out, 3, 2, 1, perfect. Okay, perfect. Welcome to our Student Citizen of the Month. By way of background, for those of you that saw Sergeant Preston Pico leave, if you hear in Gilbert of an Operation Welcome Home Ceremony, it means that we have someone in our community who's come home from service abroad. And the ceremony is to welcome them home and to do it in a way where the whole community can come. And so Sergeant Pico, he left, he had just been recognized. And so thank you for being part of that too, and on this special day. It's also, by way of announcement, a special day in Gilbert. April 30th has been designated as Public Safety Awareness Day, specifically in remembrance of our local public safety individuals who serve us. And so there was a ceremony earlier today. There's a Public Safety Memorial to the South, right in front of the Police and Fire Department, and encourage you to go take a look at it. Also, as you leave, if you did not get a chance to see the 9/11 memorial, it's right outside the doors and is also a very fitting artifact to take a look at. So with that, I welcome you. I'm Mayor John Lewis. We have other council members here. Vice Mayor Jordan Ray, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, Councilmember Jen Daniels, Councilmember Victor Peterson, Councilmember Eddie Cook, and Councilmember Jared Taylor will be here in a few minutes. Did I miss anyone? This is, in addition to the Operation Welcome Home, one of our favorite events, where we have a chance to bring our Student Citizen of the Month forward. It's one where we wish we had more time to find out the specific things because there are so many reasons why the individuals who are going to be coming up here have been recognized. And so for all those reasons, thank you for being our Special Citizens of the Month, and keep doing it. We appreciate those efforts and just keep doing it. Sometimes you don't even know what you did. But whatever you just keep doing, just keep doing it. To help us, we have a couple of slides, and I think that the first one, each individual who will be coming up here will be receiving a special bag, and it's a green bag. And the green bag is a reminder to shop local. And so this bag says, "Think Shop Gilbert." And we happen to have two eating establishments right across the street that have some coupons that are in this bag. And one is the Taste Buds, where they have yogurt, and the other is Mike's Burgers, Cheese Stakes, Ice Cream, and so forth. And they're both right across the street. But if you happen to have a favorite anywhere in Gilbert, we invite you to go there, especially tonight, because this is a special recognition night. And before you need to go home and do homework and dishes and things like that, you have our permission to go out and celebrate. So you will each receive one of these bags. And then, as far as groups, to keep it orderly, we'll have three different groups. And Group 1 will be, in just a minute, we'll have you come up. If your elementary school starts with the first letter, A to J, we'll have you come forward. You'll all be behind me, and each individual will come up one at a time. If you'd like to take pictures, we'll be taking a town picture. And at the back of the room are cards. And it says Gilbert Digital. Our Gilbert Digital team will place these pictures out on our website, on Facebook.
By 8 o'clock tonight.
Oh, just a second, Gardinha. I like you down there.
Congratulations to all of our award recipients tonight. All of the images that I take will go on the town's Facebook account. You can just pick up a card from me, and I'll usually have them up by 9 o'clock tonight. Please feel free to tag and share your pictures.
And if Gardinha, looks like we're trying to focus on her, takes the picture, as soon as she takes her picture, if you want to come up in this area, please do so. And that could be the teachers, could be parents, grandparents, and so forth. So with that, I invite the council members to take your places. And the voice to say each name will be Councilmember Jen Daniels. If you are in Group 1, your elementary school, first letter starts with A to J, and that could be like Ashland Ranch, could be Burke, and so forth, please come forward and stand back in this area. All of our Student Citizens of the Month, come on down. Councilmember Daniels, please begin.
From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Gail Belesteros.
From Benjamin Franklin Charter, Nathaniel Loper.
Nathaniel's going to be first. We're going to stand together, we'll hold that plaque right there, and here we go.
From Burke Elementary, Elias Karadagi.
Mayor Lewis, we can tell when it's getting closer to the end of school, and everyone has projects and homework. We can just tell. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Karsten Yori.
From Chaparral Elementary, Ava Olson.
From Christ Greenfield Lutheran School, Luke Morton.
From Finley Farms Elementary, Abigail Beck.
From Gateway Point Elementary, Jaylen Brown. I can always tell when I say their names wrong, because they give me a look. So I can tell right away, I said Jaylen, it's Jalen, isn't it? Jaylen? Okay. The teenagers, you can really tell when you say their names wrong. From Gilbert Elementary, Daniel George.
From Greenfield Elementary, Jada Guanzo.
From Highland Park Elementary, Brigham Stewart.
From Higley Traditional Academy, Charles Osborne.
From Islands Elementary, Seth March.
I see we also include a copy of the Constitution of the United States. This is great, I forgot to mention, I think. All right, here's our picture. Now, what we do at this point is, Group 1, we're going to do a picture where all the council members can come in. So come stand up in this vicinity. We'll get a little closer. Come right up about right here. Come up. And we're going to do a group picture, and you can feel free also to take pictures of this. We'll get the entire council in it. A big round of applause for Group 1, thank you. Group 2, if your elementary school begins with the letter K to Z, in other words, if you haven't come up yet, come on down, please. Group 2, Councilmember Daniels, please.
From Mesquite Elementary, George Martos.
From Neely Traditional Academy, Grace K. Ger.
From Oak Tree Elementary, Richard Ramage. Richard Ramage. Thank you, Richard.
How does that pronounce at the end?
Richard Ramage.
Okay, perfect.
I like to know that I get better. Richard, we need you back.
From Patterson Elementary, Michael Bell.
From Pioneer Elementary, Caroline Kessler.
From Playa del Rey Elementary, Chase Salisbury.
From Power Ranch Elementary, Ally Sarmiento.
From Quartz Hill Elementary, Trevor K. Tenney.
From Settlers Point Elementary, Casey McCann.
From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Isaac Farrett.
From Spectrum Elementary, Joseph Maturo.
From Town Meadows Elementary, Brooklyn Bryce.
And from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Chantal Herrera.
Group 2 will do our picture together, come on up here. As we're organizing, I also wanted to have all of our teachers, school administrators, stand and be recognized. In addition, all of our camera people, if you could stand. Big round of applause for this group. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'll get Settler, ready for the picture. Big round of applause for Group 2, you may be seated, thank you. Group 3, if you are in junior high or high school, please come on down. Group 3, Councilmember Daniels, please.
From Campo Verde High, Eric Hildebrandt.
From Cooley Middle School, Cameron Munoz.
From Gilbert Classical Academy, Karen Baca.
From Gilbert High School, Ariana Eklund.
From Gilbert Junior High, Daniel Gregory.
From Greenfield Junior High, Bryce Backlin.
From Highland High School, Angelica Cinchinelli.
From Mesquite High, Cody Eccles.
From Mesquite Junior High, Alyssa Dong.
From Payne Junior High, Alexandra Sweeney.
From Perry High School, Abigail Peters.
And from South Valley Junior High, Ryan Kaplinger.
Group 3, let's do our picture together, please. Thank you, a big round of applause for Group 3. As I mentioned, each individual who is recognized, there's great things to say about them, and I wish we had more time to do so. But thank you, thank you for coming to give support. And for our Student Citizens of the Month, again, thank you for being the shining lights of Gilbert, Arizona. On that note, you are officially dismissed to go off and do good things. Thank you. And for those who would like to stay for the town council meeting, it will begin in a couple of minutes, you're invited. But otherwise, as I said, go shop Gilbert. But otherwise, as I said, go shop Gilbert. Vice Mayor Ray, do you have a scout?
Yeah.
Oh, great, okay. We'll put this down then as our ten second warning. I officially call to order our April 30th, 2015 Gilbert Town Council Meeting, welcome. It's good to have you here, we will begin with Vice Mayor Ray introducing one of our great young men in the Gilbert community who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Mayor, this is Dustin Helton, who's here, he's also part of the ROTC at Camp Overdy, and he's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Thank you, we invite you to your eyes.
My Pledge of Allegiance. Of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, as noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk, an interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight Pastor Scott Jones of the Resurrection Episcopal Church will say, off the invocation, we invite him to come forward. For council members to know, I had a chance to meet Pastor Jones at a Rotary Club meeting. And also, I think it was Global Villages Festival or some of the other events, and he's currently with his congregation meeting at the community center. And there's a plot of land at the southwest corner of Higley and Elliott, where there will be a future church at some day. Pastor Jones, please.
Thank you, let us pray. Almighty God, send down upon those who hold office in this town of Gilbert, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. That with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, through Jesus Christ, our Lord, amen.
Thank you. Our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Aquarum is present.
Thank you. We have three proclamations that will occur now, and we'll begin with Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Do we have Darlene Santore here to receive the Pay It Forward proclamation? If not, I'll just tell you a little bit about this. You may be familiar with it, actually, it was made into a pretty popular film. But the concept of Pay It Forward is to promote community spirit through acts of kindness. It's a simple idea, and it's really a beautiful thing, that you just reach outside of yourself, try and serve others, and not looking for something in return for yourself, and then encourage others to serve others as well. It's really a beautiful concept, and so we want to just celebrate that a little bit here with you. And I'll just read a few parts of this. The aim of Pay It Forward, the concept, is to promote community spirit through acts of kindness. And the Pay It Forward novel, written by Catherine Ryan Hyde, in 2000 has inspired the creation of a movie and a movement that has been vital in inspiring millions of good deeds all over the world. And whereas together we can make a difference by creating positive change in our community and world, one good deed at a time, therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim Thursday, April 30th, 2015, as Pay It Forward Day in Gilbert, and we do urge all citizens to observe this day with activities and acts of kindness that demonstrate and celebrate selfless giving. With that, thanks so much, Mayor, and let's hear a big round of applause for that great idea.
Are Sandy and Richard Perkins here this evening? Why don't you come on down? We're here this evening to have a proclamation for brain tumor awareness. And I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for you. Whereas brain tumors, both primary originating in brain tissue and secondary originating in other parts of the body that metastasize to the brain, are diagnosed in more than 220,000 Americans of all ages, races, socioeconomic status, and gender each year, and continue to rise annually. And whereas malignant brain tumors are among the deadliest forms of cancer with just a 34% five-year relative survival rate, and are the leading cause of cancer-related deaths in children under the age of 14. And whereas 1,540 people in Arizona will be diagnosed with a brain tumor, and 272 will die from a brain tumor in 2015. And whereas Arizona is home to major facilities such as Barrow Neurological Institute at both St. Joseph's Hospital and Phoenix Children's Hospital, the Barrow Brain Tumor Research Center, Translational Genomics Institute, the University of Arizona's Arizona Cancer Center, and others that focus on research to find better treatments, a cure for brain tumors, and a higher quality of life for brain tumor patients. And whereas increased public awareness of brain tumors through advocacy and support for targeted research, as well as education about the impact brain tumors have on patients and their families' lives, are critical to support and action for a cure. Now therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of Gilbert, Arizona, does hereby proclaim May, 2015, as Brain Tumor Awareness Month in Gilbert, Arizona. Why don't we go ahead and take a photo? Why don't you tell us how you were involved in this, and why we're doing this proclamation this evening?
Well, I'll start. Three years, four years ago, our son was 19, and he was diagnosed with a brain tumor. It was, as we found out, it was an extremely aggressive, fast-acting brain tumor, and he died nine months later. Since that time, we have been devoted to bringing awareness and advocating for research, and ultimately a cure for brain tumors. It's, as it says in the proclamation, it's the leading form of cancer-related death in children under 14. And I believe the second, either the first or second, leading cause of cancer death for children under 20 also. So it's a much more of a problem than I think people are aware of in general.
I want to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation, it means so much to us. And speaking for the brain tumor community, I'm certain that it means so much to them. Arizona, Gilbert, the East Valley, has world-class research and medical centers coming to our part of the world. They're also bringing world-class physicians, surgeons, brilliant minds to our part of the valley and our state. And in our travels advocating for the brain tumor community, one of the bright spots for both Sandy and I is meeting kids who are dedicated to doing something about cancer in general, brain tumors, finding a cure. And it's inspirational to see these kids here tonight, who the mayor sent out the door to say, "Do something good." If we don't find better treatments and a cure in our lifetime, some of these kids that were here tonight now have the facilities and the resources, they'll find the cure. So, thank you so very much for letting us have a moment of your time and the proclamation. And between the kids and all of us, we'll do something good.
Are the Jeffersons here, William and his lovely wife? I didn't see them come in, but very quickly, the Benevolent Order and Protective Order of Elks has designated the first week of May, 2015, as Youth Week. Oh, we have other representatives, forgive me, should have asked. Please come forward. We're grateful to have, is this our Gilbert Elks Club, wonderful. Oh, forgive me. Thanks for being here. We're excited about Youth Week. The first week of May, 2015, is Youth Week that will honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments. And I'll just read two paragraphs from this proclamation. Whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource, and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. So this is the Gilbert Elks Lodge, number 2848, and you have sponsored this wonderful Youth Week for the first week in May. We appreciate your dedication, on behalf of Mayor Lewis, we do hereby proclaim the first week in May as Youth Week, and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in observance. And we're going to be observing that at our house, for sure, there's four kids at my house that are going to need, who think every week should be Youth Week. So we're going to make sure, for sure, the first week of May, thank you for being here.
Vice Mayor Ray, do we have any requests on the communication from citizens?
Mayor, we do have one request.
Please, I'll let you conduct that.
I'd like to invite Joe Guzik up to the podium. Joe, if you would state your name, and whether you're a Gilbert resident or not, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Perfect. Joe Guzik, Gilbert resident, Mayor Lewis, fellow town council members, town staff, fellow Gilbertonians, and any guests this evening. I wanted to come back tonight and report to you how we did on We Are Gilbert Day on April 11th. We had 551 participants from our community get out and volunteer. To kind of give it a little bit of a breakdown, like how maybe Councilman Peterson would do it. If you figured that each person did four hours, times that 551, that would be 55 weeks of a 40-hour week. So one, over a year's worth of effort was made in half a day. So I truly thank the mayor, Councilman Peterson. I also want to recognize Pastor Tim Thomason for doing that. And there's one other person who's a Gilbert resident, John McHatten. He is the founder of Four Hour City. He's actually spread his wings and is in 11 different communities across the state. It's not just here in the valley, but all across the state. And it's a wonderful thing to always continually to volunteer. And it's a great way to get back to the community and help our community be efficient. So with that, I'm going to segue to something that the mayor and a few others have been bragging about, our recent AAA rating. As a fellow Gilbertonian, I have to say, I've been watching you for two years very closely, and I am extremely, extremely proud and honored. It is just amazing that out of over 19,000 municipal governments in the country, only 179 have this distinction. And in the state of Arizona, only four. And so now that I can give my state representatives a hard time, they only have a double A, and we have a triple A. So it's always great to see a high-performing organization. And I know people tend to want to gravitate towards the negative and send emails into the town council. But this time, I'm requesting to my fellow Gilbertonians to reach out to the mayor and the town council and say, "Thank you. Thank you for saving millions of dollars. Those dollars can be used for better things in the community, if it be something that the town chooses to spend, or if it be our school districts, or be something else that is even more important to be needed." It is truly, truly important that we have communities where they are high-performing and they're very efficient. So I truly thank all of you, I thank the town staff. And now that the town manager has come back, I'm going to request that the citizens also send him an email as well, so that he can forward it to all the town staff. So I'm quite sure that they would love to hear the praise as well. I thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and as you know on the agenda, the council's limited to responding to anything that comes in this section. But you might be commenting on this at the end, so I'm just going to go to our town manager, the AAA rating, what's that all about? And should our community be excited about that, please? Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this is one of those items that we could never get tired of talking about, the rating by Moody's is something that's truly, as Joe had commented, something that we can all be proud of. And it's one of the most difficult things for a city or town to achieve because it evaluates so many different aspects of your organization, of your policies, of your reserve balances, of your quality of services. It also evaluates things that are outside of our control, such as median family income, such as the number of Fortune 500 corporations that have locations or corporate headquarters in your community. It looks at your school district, it's a total evaluation of the sustainability, the viability, the success of the community on the whole, to help investors judge whether or not how safe that investment for them in buying your municipal debt is. It will save us countless tens of millions of dollars as we finance the final pieces of our infrastructure and as we move towards build-out. It's something that I'm very proud of. It's something that I'm very proud of all of our staff, proud to work with our council that's set the vision and the policies. I'm very proud of every aspect, every member of our community, for the excellence they're achieving and what they do that helped make this possible. So as Joe mentioned, there's only three other communities in this state that are AAA. There's only 179 other communities nationally out of 19,000, so we've really accomplished something special and rare.
So to our town attorney, we can't really respond to what Joe said, but we can respond to the town manager. And on behalf of approaching 240,000 residents who are all involved in helping this AAA rating come, we ought to give everybody here a round of applause, please. And not in regards to what Joe said, because we can't respond to that, but we do thank Joe this morning. He was the emcee for another very special youth recognition morning, our Character Council program. And Councilmember Daniels, was it about 110 who were recognized?
We actually had about 80. We just did K through six this time, so 80.
And that was the Boys and Girls Club, and thank you for being the spokesperson with all the names. And it was a wonderful day. The six pillars of character on that wall and in the council chambers, the youth that were presented with awards this morning were identified in their schools as individuals who are doing a great job of those six pillars of character. So with that, to our town attorney, thank you for letting me just stretch that a little bit. Vice Mayor Ray, I believe you said that was the only request?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We move to the consent calendar, and I'll just jump right in. Do we have some requests on the consent calendar, Vice Mayor Ray?
We do. We have requests to talk about items 11 and 15, and if you're okay with it, Mayor, I'll make a motion for the remainder of those items.
Please.
So Mayor, I move that we approve items 4, 5A, 5B, 6, 7, 10, 12A, 12B, 13, 14, 16A through C, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23. And as part of that, that we move items 8, or excuse me, we continue items 8 and item 9 until the June 4 meeting.
With that motion, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven to vote. Thank you. Agenda item number 11, who wish to speak on that, or?
Councilmember Peterson.
Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I have no need for discussion. I just wanted to pull the items so I could vote on it separately.
Thank you. Any other council members who wish to have discussion on 11? Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item 11.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. Agenda item 15.
There are four parts to that. Councilmember Victor Peterson and Councilmember Taylor ask to speak about that.
Please. Councilmember Peterson, please.
Mayor, I didn't desire to discuss anything again. I just pulled it so I could vote on it separately.
Councilmember Taylor, similar? Any other discussion from council members? I will entertain a motion on agenda item 15.
Mayor, if you're okay, I move that we approve item 15, A, B, C, and D, all at the same time.
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. The public hearing, before I read what's on the agenda, there were at least two requests, and they're on which agenda item?
Mayor, we have a request for item 27 and a request for item 28.
And to Vice Mayor Ray, I will also have 24 polled for a separate vote, yeah, polled for a separate vote. And so that would mean that 25, 26, 29, 30, and 31, let me just confirm, any council members wishing to have any discussion on those items? As the agenda says on public hearing items, that they will be heard at one public hearing. And if individuals would like to speak on those items, they can fill out a public comment form, which we have two who requested. And I think at that, I won't read every word, I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing at this point on agenda items 25, 26, 29, 30, and 31. And I will close the public hearing on those same agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve items 25, 26, 29, 30, and 31.
Thank you. With that, is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote. Those items are approved with a seven to vote. Thank you. I opened the public hearing on agenda item 24. Don't need discussion, just the sampling is something that I usually pull, so any other council members wishing to have discussion? Close the public hearing on agenda item 24 and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item 24.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second, please vote.
Need to vote again.
Okay, please vote. That's approved with a five to vote. Thank you. I opened the public hearing on agenda item 27, and we did have a citizen who wished to speak on it. And council members, would you like a? I think I'll just answer that question myself. This is related to our Santan character area, and would ask staff to come forward to give a short overview. Thank you. I know this is of great interest to many in Gilbert, especially in South Gilbert, and so this would be helpful to have a short presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and members of town council. I'm Amy Thames with the Planning Department. We are here this evening to talk about the General Plan Amendment for the Santan character area. In spring of 2014, the Planning Commission initiated this review and update of the Chapter 10. There are four planning of character areas within the general plan, and they are all within Chapter 10, but this update only looked at the Santan character area. And I have a full presentation, but I'm just going to hit the highlights and keep going. You recall back in 2013, the Planning Department at a joint Planning Commission and Town Council gave an update on the history of the Santan character area. You can tell just from the aerial photos how much has changed over the years, with seven major master plan communities having been built up, and miles and miles of new rideaway and traffic signals. We're back in 1998 when it was originated, there were no traffic signals, and it was about eight dairies down in that area and large farms. As we move forward with the community outreach, we started out with the Planning Commission meeting that initiated the project. We moved on to open houses, and we reached out through social media to everyone to make sure that we, that the Planning Department and the town reached out to as many citizens in the Santan character area as possible. It is over 10,000 acres. We did over 10,000 mailings based on the Maricopa County Assessor's website for ownership. And with the help of the Office of Communications, we added a general plan webpage, Twitter, Nextdoor, Facebook, and email blasts. At the open houses, they were held at the South Area Service Center. There was a number of different topics that came up. You can see some of them listed on your screen. We provided for them historical data, infographics, parking and recreation master plan information, and capital improvement project information. From the residents, we hope to gather photos, stories, and descriptive words to help with the community visioning process. Community input that was received, you can see some of the main highlights up here on the screen this evening. Some of the input were about what makes Santan character areas special, and others were input regarding things that needed to be addressed over time. These helped us to create word clouds, vision statements, and the goals and policies that were reviewed and updated. The Santan, or the Santan character area, this is the land use map within the general plan. That was one of the many datas, pieces of data and research that we reviewed. We took a very high-level, 30,000-foot review of the general plan. And once again, to remember, the general plan is a vision that the community has for the future. It is not necessarily based on all of today's statistics. It's based on how the citizens and the town wants to develop as we move out toward build-out. So some of the numbers that were reviewed were population data, which were at 34,000 people in the Santan character area today. At build-out will be over 60,000. In the periphery around the Santan character area for two to three miles, we're looking at another approximate 70,000 people down in that area. With that also being said, we took a high-overview look of the commercial land uses, or not, I should say, non-residential land uses, in both the northern part of Gilbert as well as the Santan character area, to sort of review where we stood with ratios of population to acres of non-residential within the land use map. We found that at build-out, the Santan character area is four times less served than most of Gilbert, with northern Gilbert. Now, we can add to that, we are aware that there are two freeways in North Gilbert, there's two airports toward North Gilbert, and there's a higher density of housing. And of course, the peripheral population is much higher also. But with that being said, there is a strong need for services down in South Gilbert. And so we went to the next step and looked at the trade areas, which did represent that as maybe power centers aren't necessarily needed in South Gilbert due to the lower to medium density of population down there, there was a strong need for middle-to-small, medium-to-small, neighborhood commercial shopping centers, and trade areas also talked to strip centers for that area. So with that being said, it's not to say that larger commercial parcels or non-residential parcels in South Gilbert aren't needed. It just means that mixed-use development could go on those, development that isn't necessarily commercial in nature could also be worked in with commercial development and such creating the mixed-use development that is desired and mentioned in the community input that was provided to the town. Just briefly, what changed, what didn't change? The Santan character area boundary did not change. There was discussion regarding it being altered, but in the end, it was decided that it was best left with most of the area already built out. The general plan land use map categories did not change, the acreages did not change. The circulation plan map did not change. The intent of the goals and policies remain the same, though we did cross-reference the goals and policies with existing land development code, other policy documents, and other design guidelines for the town. Removed repetition, removed a few areas where it talked about commercial agricultural emphasis because as the area transitions, we'll see smaller agricultural farming, but not the big farms of the past and the dairies of the past. The vision was updated, should freshen it up and mix it a little, but the intent is still the same. Five characteristics were created, and the whole document was reformatted to the town's new branding. Just to sort of point out some of the new, fresh things that you'll see in the document, the word cloud is a combination of words that was, that were provided by the citizens during the outreach, and that is their input. And a lot of those words are, were the fresh new words that were used within the document to bring it into a more current style. Also, the characteristics you'll see listed here were based on the input received by the citizens. Little infographics and blurbs such as web links were added so that any information regarding, let's say, fissures with capital improvement projects could easily be found by the citizens reviewing the document. With that being said, I do have the whole document available for discussion if we need it. But I will note, on page two, there was a numerical error where it says only 200 acres remain. That number is a little off, and it will be corrected before it is published on the internet. With that being said, it's anticipated that the other three character areas will be updated in the future, and we'll be addressing those, refining the new format, and moving forward with our fresh, clean, new document as we initiate updates on a yearly basis or so. Thank you very much.
Amy, thank you. Any discussion from council at this point? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, a couple of things. Can you expand a little bit on the comment about four times less served? I know you touched on it on the commercial basis, but are there other areas of service gaps that were identified in the review?
Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Taylor, we primarily looked at the commercial trade areas. Employment, we recognize, will probably not be as intense in the Santan character area due to there's no direct proximity to the freeways or to one of the airports. It is within a 20-minute drive of many of those employment areas. So employment will be at a very neighborhood level. We do see home businesses being very popular down in that area. So as far as that, it was focused on commercial trade areas, and there were the four main commercial trade areas that were looked at, the neighborhood shopping center, the commercial shopping center, the strip centers, and then the overall regional power centers.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And Mayor, I'm supportive of the item. I just wanted to add, you know, to explain a little bit on my vote and support here. When the general plan originally, or the most recent one was put on the ballot, the word "general" was emphasized. And I read it, supported it, I voted for it, and continue to support it, you know, with the emphasis on "general." And there's some great guiding principles and documents here, and I think that general guideline is really the way I'm supporting this, because, you know, I don't want developments, commercial developments or residential developments to, I wanted to follow it, but I don't want them, if they're looking for deviations, to really be hamstrung by it. Allow for some creativity and some flexibility. One example is there's some wording on there about, you know, desert landscaping and some themes there. Well, if there's a developer that wants to come in and put a little bit more grass, just give them the flexibility to do that. Grass is beautiful for me, and I think there's some developments around here that see that in a, you know, express that in a meaningful way that still has conservation and preservation in mind. So anyways, but Mayor, I'm supportive of that, just with that additional comment.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Eddie Cook?
I know we had talked about one time, the boundaries of the Santan character area may be shrinking. Can you maybe elaborate why maybe we're not thinking that this time around? Maybe we revisit this the next time? Can you just share a little bit more about the logic or the thinking behind not changing the boundaries?
Mayor Lewis and Councilmember Cook, part of the thought process behind that was, what do you shrink it to? A lot of the rural residential areas are scattered throughout the Santan character area, so it make a very irregular boundary. Many of the large master plan communities actually went out of their way to meet the requirements of the design guidelines for, the guidelines for the Santan character area. And so why remove them when they tried to comply and they created equestrian or multi-use trails? They use the low rural fencing. So with the remaining vacant land, it didn't seem that there was, that there was a reason to take out those who existed within it as developed property, but to bring it forward on the remaining vacant land. So the idea of shrinking it to remove some of the master plan communities just, you know, didn't seem like it was necessary, because they are developed and they are what they are, and many of them did comply.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, we have a request to speak in this public hearing section.
We do. We invite Greg Ostapuck to come to the podium. Greg, as you remember in times past, if you'll state whether you're a Gilbert resident, and we'll give you three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. I am a Gilbert resident of about 20 years, and it's good to be back. As you know, we're here to talk about the Santan character area, and I've been a proponent of the Santan character area, and been before you many times, fighting many developments along the way. And we haven't been too successful as residents in fighting those general plan amendments in a positive result. However, we have shown some light, I think, on the Santan character area, and there's some awareness that's been made since then. In fact, in June of 2013, there was an Arizona Republic Santan Character Area article quoting Councilman Cook stating, "It seems like to me that we may be setting a precedent now for any new development that it might be easy to get through Gilbert. It just seems like I never hear the 'no.'" Also, then Planning Commissioner Bridget Peterson said, "The Santan character area does not have a specific group to oversee development, so it's up to all of us in town government to work towards its preservation." So thereafter, a review of the Santan character area was ordered in 2014. Residential open houses were scheduled. I went to them all, and as I recall, Councilman Ray, Cook, Peterson, and Peterson attended at some time. And I'm sure you heard many of the same comments that I heard along the way. Those of us that live in the Santan character area, we enjoy and want to preserve the density, diversity that we have now. Yes, yet most residents have given up the fight as they feel they are not really being heard. A rural feel, open spaces, and large lots sprinkled in with master plan communities makes the Santan character area unique. Much town staff and money was used to bring the Santan character area general plan update before you tonight. Although we believe it continues to get watered down somewhat, Santan character area policy 4.8 clearly states to maintain and preserve existing low-density and rural residential neighborhoods. It's time for our elected officials to represent the constituents that voted you into office and maintain and preserve the Santan character area. In fact, some of you campaigned on the importance of preserving the Santan character area. The time to preserve is now. The next few years are crucial as south Gilbert continues to develop. Now is the time for all of you to make sure our vision is not lost, that our voices are heard. Preserving the vision must come from the top. The string of higher-density general plan amendments must come to an end for the Santan character area vision to turn into reality. In closing, I tell my kids all the time, no matter what the circumstances, to do the next right thing. I'm asking you tonight to do the next right thing and protect and preserve the Santan character area. Thank you for your time and your service to the great town of Gilbert.
Greg, thank you. Councilmembers, any discussion, additional questions? I close the public hearing on agenda item 27. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item 27.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second please vote. It's approved with a 7-0 vote, with some good counsel from good community leader. Thank you. I open the public hearing on agenda item 28. Councilmembers, would you like a presentation? Would you have a request to speak from a citizen? Or should we just go to the citizen? Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor Ray, please.
Mayor, we invite to the podium Greg again. Same rules apply, Greg.
My name is Greg Ostapuck, resident of Gilbert. How poetic this agenda item is on tonight. I had no idea it was until I saw the agenda. But before you tonight is a general plan amendment for a land use classification change in the Santan character area. Just what we talked about. There's only 247 acres of one to two homes per acre left in the Santan character area. This parcel before you is 10% of what's left in the entire Santan character area. Seventeen general plan amendments have come before you, and they've all passed. Here's number 18 before you tonight. Please don't make it number 18. You just voted to maintain and preserve low-density opportunities within the Santan character area. Here's an opportunity before you tonight to maintain and preserve the low-density Santan character area. There is no evidence to show that this parcel cannot be successfully developed under its current land use classification. As Councilmember Eddie Cook said, "It just seems like I never hear the word 'no.'" Tonight, let's hear the word "no." Thank you.
Thank you. Any council member discussion? Councilmember Cook?
And I appreciate, you know, Greg's comments because it's always been an interesting dilemma because I feel really strongly about preserving a lot of the properties in the south. This particular property is actually very unique because it's actually in the middle of a golf course, like an island. And it's, 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 it's not like the ones that Greg has brought before us, but it's literally an island in the middle of a golf course. And, you know, I was more concerned about, you know, the height restrictions that could have been there with these bigger homes and versus, you know, a single-story home, you know, with smaller lots. So, and I spent some time looking at the other parcels that are within the plan, master plan, and you'll see that surrounding this island are a number of FS6, FS7s, and SF8s. And the SF7, you know, would kind of complement what's around it. So, in this particular case, I'm open in saying yes. I would like to say no, but in this case here, after just review and just understanding the, you know, the, the other development around this island, and, and the project going from a two-story down to a single-story, you know, I'm in favor of the, of this change.
Thank you. Other council member comments? Councilmember Bridget Peterson?
Mayor, I appreciate Mr. Ostapuck, and he and I have had many conversations about the Santan character area. And Seville Track T has been coming before the planning commission for a very long time and has been in front of the planning commission with many different, different project ideas. And it is already part, as Councilmember Cook said, of a master plan that's already there, complements the area very well, sits in a very unique situation surrounded by the golf course and next to the clubhouse. And I think what we need to look at in the future to, to reiterate what Mr. Ostapuck said is new master planned communities, and this is part of an existing master planned community. I think it's the last piece of Seville to be developed, and it does fit the request for the evening as, as far as I see it, and from everything that I've heard through the planning commission level for this project.
Councilmember Daniels?
I just echo the sentiments from my fellow councilmembers that have spoken thus far. And Greg, we love you, and we are grateful for the things that you've done and the things you've brought to light in the Santan character area. You've highlighted some things that needed change and that needed adjustment and tougher look, but we really do have to take these zoning cases on a case-by-case basis. And when we see an infill piece and what's surrounding it, when we see things, pieces that are lining a canal or other instances that have come before us previously, it's not to negate from the feel in south Gilbert. We have definitely done other projects to accommodate low lighting and creating, you know, the, the trails for horses, equestrian trails and recreational areas. And for all intents and purposes, I think south Gilbert is coming together quite beautifully. So, something is working. That doesn't mean we have it perfect, and we'll continue to refine that. But we definitely appreciate that, Mayor Lewis, tonight I am in favor of this item.
And Greg, I don't know if that Higley Riggs commercial discussion candidate is a no twice, but I will echo the comments that this, and as you have been such a great advocate for everything that was discussed in 27, that caused me to ask a lot of questions. It's interesting, this particular piece of property at one point was going to be a hotel. And, and it is inside of Seville, and paid careful attention to what the planning commission heard and what they talked about in that setting. So, I, I think from a council perspective, all seven spent quite a bit of time, from what I heard, looking at details of it. So, I don't, is there any further discussion? I close the public hearing on agenda, agenda item 28, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to recommend approval of agenda number 28 this evening, GP 14-10.
Is there a second?
Second. You don't need to recommend. You actually approved now, Bridget. Did you hear what you said? You said recommend approval.
Old habits die hard.
Oh, you're awesome. But anyway, I second that.
14 years of that.
Thank you. Please vote.
Mayor Lewis, point of order, do we need to specify the zoning on that as well since this isn't just a general plan, it's also a zoning case?
It was under the same agenda item number. Oh, is it A and B?
I just didn't want us to interrupt.
Can I amend my motion to include A and B under number 28?
Yes, and do we need a second on that amendment?
That'd be fine.
Is there a second on the amendment that was just proposed?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Please vote. Okay, that's approved with a 6-1 vote. There was a no there.
There was a no there. So, who said no?
All right. Vice Mayor Ray, did we conclude all the public hearing items?
We have, Mayor.
Okay. We move to the administrative items, agenda item 32, board commission and committee reports. Councilmember Taylor?
Committee reports?
Committee reports?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
I had a meeting with Dr. Kishimoto earlier, and I asked her to help provide some presentational material related to the override. So, when I, once I get it, I'll share it with the council members. I know that we'll probably be approached, you know, during this time, so I'll give you some data as I receive it from the Gilbert Public Schools and I'll forward it on to you.
Thank you.
Other requests? Councilmember Taylor, you're, you're, please.
We're on 32, right?
We are on 32.
All right, thank, well, and I was taking a note on 32 because I wanted to, there's a couple of things here that I'd like to highlight for the council and the public following the meeting here tonight, specifically with Parks, Recreation, Library, Services Advisory Board. Once I get that down, are you going to reassign me to something else, Mayor?
Sure.
Well, first off, just want to thank council for participating in the joint meeting, giving some good feedback. Vice Mayor Ray, I want to just brief you separately outside the meeting on a couple of things, couple of key, key points when we can get some time there, some good discussion points, great updates. Appreciate Rod and his team for bringing those. Two things that are coming up, Mayor, that are kind of fun in this space for the community. Number one is, as, as you know, the Gilbert Leadership Class 23 project has been going in, and it's a frisbee disc golf course around Freestone Park. That's a real fun project. I've been looking forward to that as I take my little one over to Patterson Preschool, and, and that's kind of fun to see that, that go in. I understand May 15th is the time when that's going to kick off, and maybe you'll get to throw the first frisbee, so, so warm up that, that frisbee arm there. Or somebody will. I don't know, I don't know who it is, but congratulations to Class 23 for a wonderful contribution to the town. The following day, the 16th, Saturday, is a fun day for the Mesquite Pool reopening and also Water Safety Day at Mesquite Junior High. A lot of great work has been done to bring the pool up to codes and more, more updated standards. I make this to look at it myself. I hear it's just absolutely beautiful from the lockers, showers, you know, some of those facilities as well as the infrastructure with the pools and the pumps, and I think the community's going to really enjoy that. And that'll be a kickoff to just a wonderful season of swimming and safety in our community, Mayor. So, thank you for the, the time to update everybody on Parks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridget Peterson?
Just to follow up with Councilmember Taylor, the project day is this Saturday. The, the class will be working at Freestone Park from about 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning till they think maybe about 1:00 in the afternoon. If you'd like to stop by anytime during then and just say hello and see the progress that they've made before we do the kickoff on the 15th, it would be greatly appreciated by the class. They are doing a lot of work out there, and they raised all the funds for this project, and I think it's going to be a great addition to Freestone Park.
Will it be easy to find the team? So, just look for the team.
Yes.
Somewhere in Freestone Park.
They're, they're off to the side. It kind of wraps around. It's a very large area, so you can't miss them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Daniels on the Youth Leadership Summit, was that since our last meeting?
Yeah, we had a great opportunity with about 100 youth here at Town Hall, and we'd like to thank Dana Birchman for being the keynote speaker for that as we discussed this year's Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee theme, "Preparing for the Future." And I think it was a successful night. It ended with ice cream, so it must have been successful.
Thank you. Agenda item, well, it's the last part, report from the town manager on current events.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Town Council. I'm going to ask town traffic engineer Eric Gaderian to come up. He's going to give a presentation on updated railroad project status. This will not be for discussionary purposes, just a presentation to the council to update you on, on where things stand with that. Eric, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. As, as stated, I'm here to give a quick update on the railroad-related projects in town. As part of this, I'll just give a quick background, a quick history of, of where we've been and hopefully where we're going, provide an update to the diagnostic review for quiet zones that was performed last year, and then look at how all this relates to our capital improvement program at all our railroad crossings that need to be updated, and then any sort of questions I can answer at the end. As a, as a quick history, I think as council members, as I know as the town traffic engineer and I know those in the manager's office, frequently we receive requests regarding quieting the train horns or quite often, and so, this is, this has been a consistent theme, I think, that we've heard. Just a quick background, in 2007, an independent consultant did a free study for the town of Gilbert. They were called RailTech, looking at quiet zones and what would be required to establish quiet zones in town. There have been subsequent council discussions regarding the railroad and quiet zones in 2009, and then again in 2013, we received direction in November of 2013 to perform a diagnostic review to really see what, what would entail creating a quiet zone in town. We did that in the spring of last year. We were ready to come back to council and talk about that, but then the discussion really expanded when, when we saw what was needed for quiet zones. We really wanted to take a step back and look at all of our railroad-related projects or possible railroad-related projects and, and make sure that we could prioritize those and, and make sure we were doing, we were getting the, the best value for our money. And here we are in 2015. So, just as a quick reminder, and, and as I'm talking about the railroad, I'm only going to be talking about the, the main UPR line that cuts diagonally across Gilbert and not the, the north-south spur line across the west part of Gilbert. We currently have 13 public at-grade crossings along the main line. All of these crossings are at arterial roadways. We also have six private crossings. There are two crossings at each of the canal crossings that happen. So, as I mentioned, we, we gathered together a team that consisted of members from the Federal Rail Administration, the Arizona Corporation Commission, ADOT, and the Union Pacific and SRP to go out to each one of our at-grade crossings and really do a diagnostic review and know what would be required to establish a quiet zone. Quiet zones are established based on basically a safety score of your crossings, and, and it's, it's an accumulative score. Based on that diagnostic review and, and the input from, from all these experts that came in, we found that nine of our public crossings would need no improvements, that three of our public crossings would need some minor sidewalk or curb improvements, and that one public crossing, the, the crossing on Gilbert Road in the Heritage District does not meet current minimum standards, and to establish a quiet zone, you, all your crossings have to meet the current minimum standards. This crossing met the standards when it, when it was built. This crossing met the standards when it was built. And then there are also four private crossings along the SRP trails that would need to be updated. As I mentioned, we took this and we were ready to present it, and then we wanted to take a step back and look at all of our railroad projects or possible railroad projects to give us a bigger picture. So, here on this map, I have highlighted the projects that have either been identified in the CIP or we've heard about or possible future projects. I'll do just a quick rundown here and then talk about them. Running from north to south, Neely Street, and possibly having a vehicular crossing there. The Western Canal pedestrian crossing near Neely Street, this is where UPR closed down the Western Canal Trail. The Gilbert Road railroad crossing, seeing that it doesn't meet our current standards, and then two at-grade trail crossing locations on the Heritage Trail and then the San Tan Vista Trail. As staff looked at this, we identified projects that were in the CIP, or there's one here that's proposed to be in the CIP, and then also just we were looking at other timeframes or cost estimates if we had them available. The Western Canal pedestrian crossing, the one that was closed, is currently in our CIP for fiscal year 2017 and two years to be designed and constructed, and that will be either a pedestrian bridge or a tunnel underneath the railroad. We've also put into the draft CIP for implementation to improve the Gilbert Road rail crossing, recognizing that with the growth in the Heritage District and now new developments starting to happen south of the railroad tracks, that this is probably an important time to really look at the safety of that crossing and improve that. We also, we just held a meeting last week with the Union Pacific Railroad to talk about our trail crossings, and one of the things is we don't want to have happen with our existing trail crossings on the Heritage Trail and the San Tan Vista Trail that happened at the Western Canal Trail, and they've agreed to work with us to know what sort of improvements we can do, not only at the trail crossing locations, but at other locations in town to be able to make that happen. The current policy of the Union Pacific Railroad is to open up any public crossing, you have to close three public crossings. But we don't have three public crossings to close in town, so they're willing to work with us on that. I think we've put down here, establish railroad quiet zones to be determined. We know we have some work to do beforehand before we can establish those quiet zones, so it's not something that's off the table, but we have some work to do before we establish those quiet zones. Also, you know, we've heard about the Neely Street vehicular crossings. Once again, that goes into, we would have to look at closing three public crossings to be able to open that public crossing. When we were looking at these projects, we really wanted to look at two main categories, both safety and community livability. We've ranked higher the projects that really focus on safety and keeping crossings, especially at-grade crossings, safe, and with that, our next steps are we're going to continue to work with our partners with UP. UP has agreed to come out and do a review of each one of our crossings in more detail to know what we can improve, and then also we'll have to begin to also work with SRP possibly on those trail crossings since they are SRP crossings that they're allowing us to use, and then look what we can do with our CIP and move forward. With that, I'll, thank you.
Eric, thank you. And Mayor and council members, I should note, this is Eric's last stay with the town of Gilbert. He is leaving us for our neighbor to the north, so we thank Eric for his service to the town, and we'll miss him.
Are we putting road closures on the way to City Mesa for that?
We are.
Eric, thank you. I would make a request on behalf of the council. We did receive several emails over the last week related to this topic, and if there was, might be similar to a council communication or just a summary of the status that we could use to send out to those residents, that would be appreciated.
Okay. Wish you well, Mayor.
Thank you. And why don't we just assign that to Kurt? I mean, the summary could be given to the expert, but Kurt can help then get it sent out to those who requested updates.
That works for me.
Okay. Kurt just made, thank you. Anything else from the Town Manager?
Just real quickly, some updates. Our Perian Field Trip Program, we had 225 kids participate in April, and our swimming registration, we already have 1,275 youths already enrolled in our Summer Youth Swim and Dive Program, but there's still room for more. Check the web.
Great, thank you. Report from council on current events. Okay. Report from Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Daniels.
I don't really know where my brain was when you asked that, but this Saturday, the 2nd of May at 10:00 a.m., across the street in the Public Safety Amphitheater, we will be having a press conference for the AZ Wall Project, which has gained some national attention in the last several months, and we are excited to move forward with that. So, Saturday, the 2nd at 10:00 a.m. Thanks.
Thank you. Saturday, fundraiser at Dave's Barbecue for the Boys and Girls Club from 12:00 to 4:00. Does that sound right? Okay. And another restaurant opening in downtown Gilbert. Can we announce that?
Yes.
Town Manager, what restaurant is opening tonight? And tonight is more of a VIP, and then does it open tomorrow?
Barrio Queen.
Barrio Queen.
Yes.
Excellent. And the Agenda Item, the first proclamation to pay it forward, there was a video, and it's about a five-minute video that we're going to send a link to you. It'll be a great family activity, cute story about paying it forward, and so, thank you for a wonderful afternoon, various events including Operation Welcome Home, Student-Citizen of the Month, and a wonderful Town Council meeting as we end the month of April.
Mayor? When you were going down through the agenda, you did not mention any future meetings, if there are any future Agenda Items.
Let's do it. That was pretty close. Are there some future meetings we need to mention?
If the council members have any future Agenda Items they'd like to raise or anybody else? Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.